We'll call the meeting in order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to South Burlington School Board Meeting. Any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Go ahead, sir.
I'm Tom Bailey. I gave a first relook to your planning connection there, at least as of last summer report, about the ideas of building new buildings down the road and that sort of thing. Did anyone consider the U-Mall, like a 20-year lease or something going on?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. I hadn't done any grunt work on it at all, other than that it's obvious that the U-Mall is going to be doing some change of use.
Uh huh.
There are any adult facilities, so it doesn't take rocket science from a financial point of view. It would make a lot of sense.
Uh huh.
I can think of a lot of reasons why it couldn't work, off the top of my head, but I haven't gamed it through, and I just didn't know if somebody else had.
Okay.
I'm happy to work on it if the board would be interested. By that, I mean, talk to a few people and see what your numbers were coming out of last summer. And I don't know what's been done on that since either. I didn't see it on the website.
Okay. Well, we've got a bunch of work that we've been doing on that, and actually, we're going to cover some of that material later on the agenda.
Okay.
But we'll put that in the back of our minds and keep it there.
I'll hang out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on items not on the agenda? Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Patrick, do we need to add a short executive session at the end of the meeting? Do you cover?
Probably a good idea. So we'll add an executive session to the end, cover any last-minute items.
That was specific to legal matter and real estate proposal?
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Does not look like we have a student representative tonight. Do we have any other? We have an announcement at our place, it looks like?
We do. I can go through it. The district, the master planning and visiting community meeting is March 22nd at 6:30 PM in the high school auditorium. I'm going to add there that there is, just for the public here, that there is childcare available that night, and it'll also be videotaped by RETN. March 8th to the 24th is the kindergarten-through-12 art show at the university mall. The April 6th school board meeting location has been changed to here at the middle school library. On April 7th and April 8th, the elementary school spring conferences will occur. And then finally, in April 18th to the 22nd is spring break, and there will be no school. At the high school, they're getting pretty excited about the South Burlington High School Career and Job Expo 2016, which is Tuesday, April 5th, from noon to 2:00 PM in the high school gym. At the middle school, we congratulate the math counts team of Victoria Chang, Ragulon, Vaakumar, Kelly Yu, and Cindy Yang for winning the state championship held this past weekend at Vermont Technical College. Ragulon also won the individual championship in the countdown round, while Cindy made the final four in the countdown round and received a presenter's award. This is the sixth time in the last eight years that Tuttle has won the state championship. On Thursday, March 17th, from 6:15 to 7:30, is the fifth grade orientation night. And these are all at the middle school again. The 6th, 7th, and 8th grade chorus will be presenting their annual pops concert next Wednesday, March 23rd at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Since it's a pops concert, students have been learning about and preparing various styles of music from Latin jazz to the 1940s swing to contemporary a cappella. Hope to see you all there. Tuesday, March 29th at 6:30, the middle school meet the coaches night is in the middle school cafeteria. Wednesday, April 6th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM are parent-teacher conferences. Friday, April 8th is half-day for students. Saturday, April 9th, the South Burlington Rebels Boosters Calcutta fundraiser will be at the Sunset Ballroom. Friday, April 29th at 8:30 to 3:30 is Tuttle Fest 2016, with a rain date on May 13th. The second annual Tuttle Fest takes place. It's the Tuttle School is in need of community service projects for students. Please share with neighbors and relatives that are in need. Tuttle has created a sign-up genius to collect a list of requested projects. Forward this link to anyone you think is in need of some spring cleanup. Ideal jobs would be yard work and outdoor cleanup. That link is pretty long to say here, so you can find it on their website, the Tuttle website. At Rick Mark at Central School, let's see, April, March 5th. Yeah.
Must be. I don't know what that is.
Got to check on the date here, but the first annual Count Me In Family Math Nights from 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
Oh, we already have that.
Yes. Yes. March 5th is over as I was reading that. Thank you, Amy. On April 1st, though, is something you can go to, the 44th Annual Spring Fair and Sideland Auction from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. At Chamberlain on April 4th is the Family Math Night. And April 4th to April 8th is the Scholastic Book Fair at Chamberlain. And that's the announcements for tonight.
That's a lot of announcements. There's a lot going on. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Does this be a good time to just? Do you have any updates where we are with the student rep and the applications?
We know. I'm just looking at Delina. I don't know anything more than we knew before.
Okay.
I think we did get an update that Patrick Burke had received the modified application form from our student rep, Nourali, and was forwarding it on to the two interested juniors.
Okay.
I think we need to decide kind of what process we want to follow after that in terms of receiving those applications.
So were you and Julie on the committee for doing that?
Yes, yeah.
So is that something the two of you can move forward, or do we need to take action as a board on next steps?
You must have heard more than me, because last I heard they were trying to find the application, and they hadn't been able to get it.
And I did hear, I got copied on an email from Nourali that was forwarding a modified application. I don't know that I saw the application, though, now that you mention it.
Okay.
It might be appropriate if we could ask the superintendent through John just to follow up with Mr. Burke on when the board would receive those applications.
Will do.
All right. Okay. Anything else under this topic for the board? Item six, city and school collaborations. Meetings are being set up now. Delina has worked with David and myself and Kevin and Helen to set up some meetings, so we have not had our first meeting yet, but they're on the calendar now. I can't remember when the next one, the first one is, but...
The 25th.
The 25th, at 3:00. Now I remember. So we'll report out after that one. Superintendent's report.
After the meeting, our last board meeting, I went back to Ray Mann. He's our data manager in IT, and asked him to watch the meeting and see exactly what the board wanted to get for specifications. So he took that information to our city clerk, Donna Kinville, and Donna said that that information isn't quite ready yet to get to you, but she anticipated mid-May you'd have a report. So that's where that stands. The second item on the superintendent's report is marijuana meeting update. David had spoken with Kevin Dorn, and he indicated the city would not be holding another informational meeting on legalization of marijuana this year. That's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, John.
I don't know if we specify where we'd cover this, but I guess it's probably as good here as anywhere, but I know it came up at the last meeting whether or not our board wanted to communicate anything specific on the marijuana legislation in addition to the VSA and the VSBA positions. And I don't know if we wanted to have that discussion or not.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I slated that into this particular area because I knew we were going to get an update on this, so thank you for triggering that. I know Martin and I had a casual conversation the other day about this, and Martin, maybe it would be helpful just to provide a little bit of update on what you perceive as happening in Montpelier, and then we can talk about what we think we want to do.
Yesterday and today, we started receiving information on the Senate Bill S-241 this morning. Before spending the afternoon on the floor, we had a joint session with Government Ops. Maida Townsend is also on that. A rep from South Burlington is on that committee. But we had a joint session where the Legislative Council started walking us through just so we understand the bill and what the Senate has done. I've already expressed to the chair of our committee, and she's agreed, that we are going to have somebody in from the Vermont School Board Association testifying about the concern. The concerns are primarily with Section 2 of the very long bill, and that's really the section that primarily focuses on youth, though there are other sections as well. So we are going to hear from her, and we haven't really figured out our lineup for testimony, but we do have scheduled for April 30, no, March 31st, I believe it is, from 5:30 till 7:30 in the Well of the House, a public comment period. So anybody can come and probably have two minutes to comment. So that's kind of where we are. I mean, it's really hard to judge where things are going to go right now. I know that some folks were taking a poll, an informal poll, of the Judiciary Committee, and somebody had counted that there are four people who are absolutely against this, and six people who are going to wait and hear what's going on. So that's just, for whatever that's worth. But I think that's it as far as the status. We will be, if the board is going to do something, it should do something soon. You know, I've expressed that. I think that the VSBA has really hit the issues that I think we would be concerned with. I don't know if you've all had the chance to look at the VSBA, VSA's, it's the same thing, at their outline of concerns that they want to make sure are addressed.
Are you hearing from the VSA as well?
Yeah, I've talked to Francis. I've all of a sudden forgotten.
Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. My brain's a little mushed right now.
How about the VPA?
They've also submitted, they submitted to all the House legislators an email that said we have taken a position and a link to each of the three position papers. So my view is it's well-covered, but you know, I certainly defer to the rest of the board as far as where to go. As far as the interests that we certainly have, there are people in the State House who are going to be heard, and I do get the impression, at least on the committee members on the Judiciary Committee, that this is a concern, that's one of the primary concerns is what the effect is going to be in the schools. And just as an aside, and I meant to, I wanted to mention this, is that I'm actually going to be sitting down with Patrick Burke next week as a legislator, and this is the prime topic, that I'm just going to get his input on what he's seen in the school. And essentially, what I'm hoping, but we really haven't had a discussion in the Judiciary Committee, is that we start by really defining and understanding what the problem is, you know, and as a first step. And that's part of what I want to talk to Patrick about, is really understand from his perspective before we start looking at the proposed solution that the Senate has, and whether that is a solution if there, you know, we do decide that there's a problem with our current situation. So I'll stop.
Yeah, maybe just as a quick comment, I had an opportunity to see the comments and the presentations that were made at Essex in the last probably couple of weeks. That was taped and had an opportunity to kind of listen to their session, which had sort of a pro-legislation view and then an anti-legislation view, and then took comments from the public afterwards, brief comments. And I was satisfied at our last meeting that the professional organizations had kind of outlined what needed to happen before any legislation should advance as it related to schools and, you know, the population that we really look out for as a school board, our students primarily. And I think that public session persuaded me that it might, although, you know, timing is of the essence, and I hear you, Martin, on that. I would be more inclined to entertain a specific communication from this board that rather than give the laundry list of what else needs to happen before legislation should be considered, and if the current proposal addresses that. A lot of the comments I was hearing kind of fell into a couple categories, and one was, you know, that the current kind of war on drugs was failing. So there's sort of a premise that all current efforts are failing. There was a focus on, so let's just do something. And it's sort of like, do something different, do something now. It was a little bit of a, I'll use my paraphrase, which is, let's run something up the flagpole. And it didn't have a good feel toward it, given the concerns we know for, you know, children's health and emotional well-being and safety and so forth. And the last one was really the notion that the laundry list of things that have to be addressed before any legislation should be considered is pretty long. So to me, there, I do believe there is a position that says we should take legislation off the table until all of these issues are addressed. Because I do, I get the sense there's a little bit of a rush, again, to do something, but it's in the face of a lot of professional parties, particularly those that are concerned about the health of our youth, saying, hold up. So I wanted to offer that up as an alternative view, and I'm not making a motion necessarily. I think maybe the feedback you get, Martin, from Patrick, could inform.
Yeah, and let me give you just a couple more points. Let me reiterate, is that, again, I haven't had the discussion with the rest of the committee, but I think they're going to be on board of testing the premise first. You know, the premise that everything's broken. I also do not get the feeling that there is a rush in the House to try to just do something. For whatever the Senate did, that's fine, but we're going to be digging down into the details, and it's not going to, I mean, it's already such a close call in the judiciary just right now, and it has to go through there first, that I just don't see that we're going to have a rush to judgment. I don't feel that there's those pressures. It's a different situation as far as political pressure, frankly, with the Speaker not going to be around next year, and he's not putting any political pressure on that I've been able to tell, and the fact that the governor's not going to be here as well. It's a different kind of feel. I mean, we're going to take our time and make sure we do it right. And the inside bet at the House, in the House, is that it's not going to happen this year. But having said that, weirder things have happened. I didn't think it was going to get done in the Senate, you know, frankly. So that was actually rather surprising to me.
Does that connect your earlier comment? Because your earlier comment was if we wanted to do something, you would suggest we do it sooner rather than later, and this seemed to say...
Well, because we're starting to...
Your second comment seemed to say, relax, it's going to take some time, so...
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, we only have something like eight weeks left, seven, eight weeks. There's a ton of stuff to do, and we really are going to... What I have noticed, certainly at least on the judiciary, and maybe every place else is the same, is they really dive, we really dive deep and really do our due diligence. I mean, it took us up until just last week to get through our two big bills that we were dealing with. So, but the other thing, let me make sure, this is an important point, is that I've asked Nicole Mace and Emily Simmons, both of the Vermont School Board Association, that, you know, they have provided this outline of concerns. But I've asked them what they need to do is address the actual bill that is before us now and how they do or don't, and it's don't, satisfy their concerns. So we have the advantage of them digging deep into it and how much we want to spend our time here doing a formal, I mean, we can, but I'm not sure it's the best use of our time.
So I'll check in with Julie and Bridget, see if you have comments you want to share. Elizabeth, would your comment about the hesitancy, would you say you were aligned, then, with the position statement from the School Board Association?
I'm aligned with the position statement, but concerned that that was another point that was brought up pretty significantly in Essex's open session of like, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And when I look at the position statement, there's a lot that would have to happen
Right.
to do it right. So I'm kind of acknowledging upfront. And what I'm not hearing from the legislature, not that I'm there every day, so Martin, I really look to you for that feedback, is that anybody's saying, we know we can't do it right, so we're not going to try to push anything through, and we're going to make sure we cover our bases on these, on these areas that have been identified as concerns. Because I do not believe, I believe the choice is there right now. I just don't believe that all of those concerns that are coming forward from the Department of Public Health and the three professional organizations can be addressed in a meaningful way to get any legislation through in this session. It's a pretty onerous list of things that should be addressed.
It is, and, you know, I can't prejudge whether they would be addressed, but yeah, there is a long, long list. Yeah, so...
So let me just pause. Elizabeth, obviously, was, her initial comments were well-spoken in that she was not necessarily making a motion, and I'm not hearing one being proposed, so...
I mean, I can take the informal word back to the committee and say, you know, at the school board meeting, it was pretty clear. I mean, if we all wanted to just kind of informally tell me, yeah, slow down, you know, we're not comfortable with where we're going, I can certainly take that back and explain that that's the case. And, you know, certainly, I would suggest, I don't know if we're in a position by March 31st to designate a person to speak on behalf of the board, but you folks are certainly welcome to go and speak and explain you're on the board, though not speaking on behalf of the board, and here's the concerns.
Well, let me ask it in a different way. Would anybody have a concern if Martin left with that mindset?
No.
All right. I will share with the committee what you all said.
Excellent. The only other minor point I wanted to cover here is, I think, our last meeting, we were asked to sign the code of conduct. I have not signed mine yet. I'm not sure if anybody else has turned theirs in. That's just kind of a reminder for people.
I think I recycled mine.
I did too.
Would you mind emailing the board members that document again?
We're the recalcitrant board members, yeah.
It was not intentional. Well, yes, it was intentional. I recycled. I didn't mean...
Thank you. Any other questions on superintendent's report? All right, that moves us to approval of pre-qualification criteria for general contractors for the Munson Field project, which is an item that we have for action tonight.
This, you don't see for a lot of our bids, because we've only had one the last few years. It was over half a million dollars, which was the high school elevator. But anything over half a million dollars has a special action that has to take place according to state law. That the first thing is, before any, the proposals go out to contractors, that we have to advertise and pre-qualified general contractors who have shown some capability to be able to do what we need to do. In other words, change out a turf field, repave a track, and add safety equipment and other equipment into the job. So this form, we had vetted pretty heavily last year with the elevator, so it's not new to people who were on the board last year, but it lays out the dates where the legal notice has to be in the paper before an award can be made, and lays out the criteria that contractors are interested have to fill out to get back to us. So the, on page four of the, shows a construction schedule, and right now, we're at May, I'm sorry, we're in March 16th. And you count the 60 days plus one to get bid proposals back from qualified general contractors is May 16th. So because of our, timing of our election and the shortness of the summer, it's a very tight schedule. But, so we're starting, the clock starts tonight if it's approved, and doesn't start if it's not, so...
I have one question about the dates. On page four, we say that we'll notify the pre-qualified general contractors on the 15th of April. It says the 14th of April on the next page. I don't know if that was somehow intentional. So in the list of dates, it says the 15th, and then right under, on page five, it says, note, statements received at this date and time will not be considered. Then it says the district will notify all applicants in writing on April 14th. So it was just a little bit inconsistent.
We can change that.
Yeah. And then the only other question, I had a question on the project description. It says that the project consists of taking off the surface of the track to see if the base is suitable.
Yes.
And then it's a little confusing whether, if it's not, whether putting a brand-new base on the track, it didn't seem clear to me whether that was included in this estimate, our pre-estimate of $775,000. I mean, maybe that's not even...
Well, when we do our bid specifications, that will be a qualifying action that the board, that the vendors can see. So there'll be, it's a contingent action if the sub-base is level, no cracks, which we don't know. Testing looks like it's really in good shape, but that'll be part of the specifications that are laid out by our engineer. And this is more general to see, boy, have you done this work before? Where have you done it? That kind of thing.
There was one question that we, we have a response back at our tables as well, if you haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, there's a question on the first page about the other equipment. And I realize that other equipment isn't, it could be anything. It's a little vague there. So what that, the answer to the question is, we have hurdles that are very old that'll last as long as the track that need to be replaced. If there's enough money, we would replace those now. If not, then they'd have to go with some other funding source. So it's not a vehicle or anything like that. It's something directly related to track.
Any other questions from the board? I think we need a motion.
I'll move that we approve the pre-qualification criteria for general contractors for the Munson Field project as proposed.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Is there any more discussion? Those all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That brings us to item nine, legislative update.
Should I talk to you about marijuana?
Groundhog. It's like Groundhog Day.
Beyond that, yesterday, we passed on to the Senate House Bill 529, which was my bill, which for four years, schools that sell... bill, which for four years, schools that sell their schools, districts that sell their schools do not have to pay back to the construction fund. So, that, I don't know if, it should go through the Senate, but, you know, but, but it's made it through the, this first step. So, but what we also found through this whole process is that we don't owe a huge amount on any of our schools, if I'm right. Didn't we kind of in the end determine that? So, in any event, there are two other bills, but because I was reading the 89 pages of the, of the marijuana bill for the second time to understand it, that I haven't had a chance to, I'm making an excuse upfront, but there's a special education bill that does some changes that probably somebody here should take a quick look, and if there's any feedback, they want me to, and I can get that, but I assume that folks may, may know where that is better than I am. And there's a yield bill, which will determine really how much of a tax rate we end up having to have, and that's the amount of money that we will get from the state per student based on the statewide part of the tax. So, that should be moving to the floor over the next couple of days.
School choice?
I don't really think, there, there's a possibility that somebody might seek to amend either of those two bills I just mentioned to try to put school choice into there, which in some respects is something that we have been pursuing here at South Burlington for a while, because up until a few years ago, we had various arrangements where we were getting kids from, from Burlington, from Colchester, Winuski, what, different places, Essex, who came here and money followed. And, and a law was passed, and I can't remember which one it was, but, which said that money.
129.
Good job. 129. You ought to be a legislator.
No.
So, so in any event, that money no longer follows the students in these situations, and we have lost 20, 25 students. So, we've been pushing to have a situation where if a student chooses to come to South Burlington from CVU Essex and such, and if we have some sort of mutual agreement with them, that money would follow. But, the amendment that might be coming is broader than that and has some real problems on a statewide basis as far as equity in education. And the fact that it's coming in, and it's a big issue and it's coming in as an amendment, that means it hasn't really been vetted by the Education Committee. So, if it does in fact come there, I'm likely to vote against it, even though in some respects it could be the benefit of the school. But now is, and this process is not the right time, and this exact way of doing it, from what I understand, is not the right way to do this. Although, we'll continue to pursue the appropriate approach where if we can have agreements with surrounding schools, money will follow. So, and that's all. Unless you want to hear about non-educational bills. Driving with a suspended license? I think we're good. All right. Yes.
So, I read it quickly, but I, I wondered about the language in terms of, I know it's about the state payback if we sell a school.
Right.
Because the only way that it's written in the language, I read it quickly again, but I interpreted as you wouldn't have to pay back to the state if you sold the school and then consolidated.
If you, if you sold the school and used the money for renovations of existing schools or, I mean, if you're selling a school, I guess it's understood that there's some form of consolidation occurring. That's the concept.
So, you wouldn't sell a school and rebuild that school elsewhere, you would have to sell a school and consolidate into existing facilities. Or sell all schools and consolidate into two new or one new facility.
I think the intent, and I can double-check again, that if the money is being used for, for renovations and the like, then, then you don't have to pay it back. But I can double-check that. I understand the scenario that you're talking about, that if you're just selling the school to build a, a new replacement school, does that count? And I can circle back to double-check that.
Okay. Yeah, that would just be great, only because when I read it, I interpreted as you only reap that if you favored some sort of consolidation, and it had to be for educational benefit. And that was sort of what was driving it.
Right. That's my, yes, correct. So, I can double, double-check that.
The only other thing that Martin said, I just want to clarify a little more. When we requested information from the state last year about what the payback was going to be for Markcott School first, and then Chamberlain second, and then Orchard finally, the, the numbers for the first two schools were given to us at gross. The state, the state gave us the total number for the construction rather than the 30%. So, those numbers, I, I don't have them right here with me, but the number for Orchard was correct. The other two numbers were overstated. So, that's, we'll have that information, but.
We'll move along to agenda item 10, review the topic for the other paper. Julie, I believe that's you.
It's me. So, it's me, and it's the paper, the articles due the day after, the Thursday after our Tuesday night community meeting. So.
So, you're all set?
Whatever your pleasure is.
Okay. And then at some point, we need to, I think we need to, do we already have somebody assigned for the next one? We don't have to cover that tonight, but at some point we need to assign the next one.
I think I was doing the next one. En's policy.
Okay. Thank you. Back that to my notes. Thank you. Any other questions on that agenda item? All right. That moves us to master planning and visioning. So, I've got a couple, I'm going to call working documents. A couple of us have, had volunteered to do various tasks out of the last meeting to keep things moving. I think these are all in various forms of completeness is probably the safest way to describe it. I don't, I don't know if these are ready yet for public consumption. We'll have to see what the board thinks. These are, I'm not sure how we would normally do this. These are definitely work-in-progress documents at this point. One more. Keep them coming.
Yeah.
So, what I'd like to try to do is tackle this in the form of the agenda. So, we had a draft agenda for our March 22nd meeting that talked about a welcome, kind of a work-to-date, options under consideration, then education opportunities, then an update on the analysis that we've had White and Burke work on, and then some closing items that I think were still moving around on the table. Last time we talked about the best way to tackle those. And I think some of our working documents address those. I'd like to start, maybe if the, if the board is acceptable of this model, is just walk through agenda by agenda, because I think it'll, they build on each other. And if we can go through each one at a time, we'll probably be in a good place. Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Okay. So, the first item is the welcome. The general concept here is really obviously just welcoming the, whoever, who comes. We want to talk about the goal of the evening, which is largely providing, which I just kind of walked through with the agenda, but we provide some history. We want to include sharing where we are now and what we've discovered along the way. We want, we want to commit to holding more community gatherings, to continue sharing and receiving information back from the community. And we want to hear concerns. We want to hear the people's interests in relationship to the school configurations in all of our schools. And we want to hear community feedback on the process that is unfolding now. That's what I was, those are the notes that we have to date on the, the opening and kind of setting the stage for that two hours. Any comments, suggestions, arguments, funny stories?
Did, did we want to be specific prior to the 22nd about the additional community meetings?
About the specific community meetings that would follow the 22nd?
Correct. I mean, I think we, we, as a board, we won't have a chance to meet before then. So, this is kind of our venue to talk about whether, whether we want to be general about that, or if we want to be more specific.
Do they actually have dates?
Well, I'm not even think, I'm not, I'm thinking less about dates, but maybe a timeframe and maybe, I know there was some, a proposal that maybe we try to have something at each of the elementary schools sometime before the end of the school year. I, I mean, I don't know what's feasible, but that level of specificity, not, you know, not with a specific date. And again.
Perhaps at least a number, at least a number, or at least, you know, an end date for when those meetings would be completed.
I'm a little concerned about the timetable, May and June, given what comes onto our plate in May and June, and the fact that as we get towards the end of May and a lot of wrap-up school type of things, we tend to lose some of the community for most of the summer, frankly. And I just, I have a concern about trying to push those things into that short time period when we've been pretty thoughtful about the process to date, I think, and.
I think it brings up a question of the bigger picture of the process, though, and when we would like this process to be completed by. Because the working document that I sent around was sort of a second draft of a document that I had shown Elizabeth, and she had given me a few comments on it. And to get to a vote in November, which I think might be ideal because we would get the most community participation in that kind of a vote, because it would be, you know, it would coincide with the presidential vote. We'd get a lot of community, you know, voters. We really need to complete the feedback process pretty quick so that we have enough time to analyze things while people are away over the summer, and then come back with a proposal and a board vote, and then enough time to warn, because we have to warn 45 days before the vote in November. So, if we're saying that we're committing to these public meetings, but they're not going to be finished before the summer really takes over everyone's calendars and we lose people, then what we're really saying is we're going to miss that November timeframe, which is okay, but we just need to be thinking that it really does sort of impact things that far out if we slow down this part of the process.
Yeah. And I don't want to see this drag on either. And if we can get, I would think we should be able to find three days in April and May and have one of them be a weekend day, just to, because people don't, even though we'll have it each elementary school, doesn't mean.
Yeah, they're not neighborhood, they're not intended to be neighborhood meetings.
Right. They're not intended to be, you know. But I'd like to, you know, once we get started on this, I'd like the momentum to go and, and have the data by the summer for us to evaluate. Because, because if we don't do it then, you know, we're talking fall to really, because you're right, because lots of people are not available in some months.
I think one of the things that's in the front of my mind right now, and I, I agree, I think we want to try to find a way to keep it moving. And what I'm cautious about committing to on the 22nd is actual dates, only because this date coincided with a Chamberlain of, or Chamberlain school event that we had to, that they were gracious enough to move, and I feel bad about that. But I think we need to be very thoughtful about making sure that we, we can do it. So, maybe what we commit to is a goal of getting them done and a commitment on when they will be published. No, we will tell you these dates no later than this. So, at least we, we're held accountable for finishing our work and getting them on the calendar. So, the question is, what is that date that we're going to commit to so that we can follow through? And I would maybe ask, John, what do you think is a reasonable date for us to vet the various events at all the schools so that we can find a date in each of the schools?
Well, I think.
How much time do you think we would need on that? And then we would run that by the calendars of the board members.
That wouldn't take so long. I think it's a matter of getting it out to them and knowing that, oh, here's what we want to do. Is your calendar up to speed? Is everything up to speed? And then getting that back, you know. So.
Looking at the line.
No, I'm trying to look away from the line. I can, I can make that call. I think, I, I think we should be able to do it by the end of next week, you know, if, if not, mid-week. I, I don't think, I know what's ahead for some of the administrators and, and David's out, so mid-week, sure.
So, what if we say, we're, and we need to run it by the board calendars, because I think it's important that we are, at least the majority of us are present, if not all of us, for these. If we get the answer from this administration about what dates are available by the end of next week, that we commit to, committing, getting our calendars over the weekend, and then by Monday or Tuesday, 28th or 29th, we can publish dates to the public? Does that sound reasonable?
I think if there's an expectation there's no events, that's not available, because there are, there are going to be athletic events and, and I'm not sure how we, city events, city calendar, I'm not sure if we, obviously, we look to the big things, but there's something going on there every night, too. So, it's.
And we're giving three different options. As long as we don't have the three options are on the same day as the same kind of event, that kind of thing.
Kind of mix and match.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll commit to that within the opening of this conversation on the 22nd, that we will have dates back out by then. My assumption is that I would probably do the opening. Does anybody else have an objection to that or want to take that task? All right. So, the next section was the work to date and the options under consideration. And Martin had graciously offered to put pen to paper or keyboard to fingers to type up some stuff. I believe that was sent around. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
I had specific comments on bullet points and things, but I don't know if we need to really dive into those right now.
They're not materially.
They're not materially different than this. It's just suggestions for other things that we might want to add into the presentation.
For, for the purpose of the, of just having a public, would you just, would you mind just kind of really high-level covering what, not all of this, but a short synopsis of what you're planning on covering? And again, I assume since Martin offered a drafter, that Martin's accountable for speaking it. So, if anybody has a concern there.
Unless somebody is dying to do it, I'm happy to do it. I mean, I'd, I'd outline essentially what, why we're doing this, why we started this process almost a couple of years ago now, with respect to some of the pressures on our schools and the fact that we're, been talking about updating our strategic plan, strategic plan for a while anyway. And I would go into some background, not extensive, about formulating the task force, what the task force did, what its recommendations were. Then, what we did with those recommendations, actually, that, that the superintendent also had a recommendation, explained that a little bit. And then what the process was after that, that the board undertook with respect to the questions that we, we really had, that we didn't have the task force address, that were questions that we needed to address, and how we have gone about addressing them with engaging White and Burke and also tasking the administration with getting some information regarding educational benefits and such. I think that's really a thumbnail of what that will be.
Great. Any further conversations or comments? And that would lead us into the third agenda item, the 22nd, which would be David. And he listed David Young, an administrator, so I'm not sure who he's bringing in. I'm not sure if you know that, John, but.
I do know that some of the building principals will be there, sharing, too. I do know that he's working with Susie Merrick on a PowerPoint presentation, and the details he's, he's going to finalize on Monday.
So, now might not be a bad time to come back to that piece. David, we'd like the board, or David had asked, and I think the board would be, would like to take him up on the offer to go through that. He has suggested perhaps on Monday at 11:30 or noon, he would, he could walk through that presentation for the board, for board members that would be interested in seeing that run through and commenting on that and helping him along. Who, if any, would like to participate in that?
I would like to. I need to check my calendar.
I would like to as well. I mean, I can. I don't have to do it. Are you wanting a couple, or?
Well, I want to see who is, I mean, this is an important meeting, so I want to be sensitive. If, if a number of people want to attend that, then we, we need to warn it, then we should do it that way. If, if people are willing to defer that, then that's fine, too.
Do we know how long it's going to be?
I would like to be there, but I just can't be there.
I am unavailable as well that day.
I will defer to your announcement.
My thought is it would be an hour.
Yeah.
And Elizabeth, you said you need to still confirm.
I do need to confirm my calendar.
Elizabeth is tentative. If you're unable to, do you want to?
Let me know if you're unable to.
Okay. So, that's, I don't think we have any other insight into that portion at this point other than the dialogue that we had had with.
Delana, you let us know, 11:30 or 12?
Whatever works for best for you.
Okay.
I'll send an email out.
Thank you.
And then Stephanie will, from Whiten Burke, will present some of the financial information that she has been working with the board on, on our agenda four. She's obviously not here tonight, so she will cover all of that. Any comments or questions about that from the board at this point?
I guess I just would, would reiterate, I mean, perhaps this goes without saying, is the idea is that we will have had the five options out there with the educational benefits and the finance side. You know, that, by the end of the, of these presentations, that basic material will be out to the, to the community, so.
So on our agenda, that, for the 22nd, that gets us through till around 8 o'clock, unless we were to shorten a couple of those up. And we might be able to do that with a couple of these. I think, Martin, you thought yours might be a little bit shorter than on the agenda. Mine might be the same thing. So we might be ahead of schedule, or we might adjust this based on that. But that does bring us to one of the conversations that we need to have here about the next step after that during those sessions. We had originally discussed the possibility of a roundtable, bringing people out together. And logistically, that doesn't sound, I think everybody's aligned that that doesn't sound feasible based on the amount of time and the space that we're in. And so I think there's a couple of other ideas that had floated up. I'm not sure if board members want to offer those up and start the conversation around how do we engage community feedback in that session?
I mean, I'll start. One of the key things is follow-on, follow-on meetings.
Right, right.
Where there can, can be those more of the roundtable discussion options. Not that that has to be the specific format, but I, I have gotten the impression, talking to a few community members that, and I think the board has been copied on a couple of emails that I think some people thought March 22nd was the speak now or forever hold your peace meeting. And I think it's important that there, the message be sent, that that is really a downloading of all the assessment that's gone on and that there will be additional opportunity for feedback and discussion.
And when we're, as a setup for those three additional meetings and such, we should, whenever we communicate that, we should encourage people and have the link to the RETN, because we want to sit down and roll up our sleeves at those meetings. We expect or hope, at least, that the people will have either been at the March 22nd meeting or will have reviewed the information, so we can all contribute at those future meetings, so.
I would say that probably the most efficient thing, if we're not going to do breakouts, is just to have a question and answer session. I mean, just to walk around with a microphone and ask people to give feedback and ask questions. And then I had also envisioned that we would have some kind of information sheet that people would fill out on the way in. And then also, if they had any comments or questions that weren't addressed in the meeting, to give, to write those down as well and give us back that information, because the, the draft that I had done, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, captured some demographic information and also sort of information about how people are best contacted and how they, they find out about these things, so we can do a better job in the future of reaching out to a broader base of people and trying to get as many different opinions as we, you know, go through the other community meetings as well. So I would just envision a question and answer session really at the end, and then making sure that people are really giving us those feedback forms as they leave.
I know the other idea that I had heard, that I had discussed with one person, was the possibility of taking some of, some broad questions after all the information's been downloaded and putting them on large, those large white easels or those post-it notes, and put them in the various spots in the lobby, and then invite everybody, including us, in the lobby to kind of talk and write comments on those as we're going, which would be a little more casual, a little more community conversation than the forms, but may not be effective either. So I just want to throw that out as another scenario.
Carousel. That's a teaching model, carousel.
So do people have a leaning on, on how we would do that? So we've got the welcome, the history, the education opportunities, the financials. We'll close that with a, a request to either engage in the lobby, engage on those sheets and a microphone. Where are people leaning, or a third option?
So I, I guess one downside, and, you know, this is a community meeting and the community should give us input, is that I really want this to be informational as much as possible, and I don't want it to become, at that stage, you know, that's for the roundtables and such, to be a big debate over what the best option is then. It's what I really hope is that we'll get questions to clarify or questions about additional information that is needed, et cetera, as opposed to everybody sharing their opinions. And whichever model works best to achieve that end, because, you know, we want to have everybody share their opinions, but that's not the main point of March 22nd. It is to get the information out, to find out what people still need to know and to try to clarify the information, and then have plenty of other opportunity to really gather the opinions from everybody and viewpoints.
Yeah, I have some concerns about the question and answer period, just because I think that could go on and on and on. I mean, we could certainly limit it, but, I mean, I think there are going to be a lot of questions.
Well, we can make sure there's also opportunity that people can ask questions that they don't think of then or don't get an opportunity to send us those questions as well.
Yeah, of the, of the options that have been discussed, I, I do think a Q and A in the session is important to have. And it, and to me, it probably won't be comprehensive, Julie, and there, you know, there'll be people who think of something later or just, I do think there, there'll be, it'll be a time-limited Q and A. But I think that is a good opportunity to sort of gauge the kind of information that is needed. I, I think each of those, those community meetings that follow will be iterative. I think we will have learned more each time we do that, so can share additional information. But I would be inclined not to do the carousel approach, Patrick. But I would, I, I've seen some of the questions that Bridget proposed, and maybe to scale that down so there's some kind of a leave behind that could be collated so that we have a master list of, and, and some kind of categorization of here's, here are the areas that people just needed more information, so we can adjust the next go-round. And here's, here's unique concerns, here's a bunch of common concerns. And I think those could maybe be pull, a shorter list of what you had initially, but a way to document and something we can take behind and act on. Not that, not that the carousel wouldn't be, but it might be redundant, too.
All right, I, no offense to you, believe me. So one of the things that I know we had talked about was we wanted to find a way, before we went too far down the process road, is to engage some of the community in informing that process. This felt like this, this was one of those opportunities to hear some feedback about, we're about to do this process, does this work for you, does this not work for you? So I don't want to, maybe that's just how we frame some of those questions. And maybe some of the questions on the sheets that you were talking about, Bridget, so that we get that feedback. That's not quite the same as having a dialogue about that.
I wonder if.
It may not be feasible either, so.
Yeah, I was wondering if in one of these presentations, either in yours at the beginning or in Martin's, or maybe in the closing remarks, we say this is, maybe not quite as detailed as the, you know, the little thought-out process I had, but maybe some of the key milestones from that process or the key parameters around when this type of work might be completed might be helpful to put on a slide and say, this is what we are thinking the process might look like. And one of the questions we have is, you know, feedback on that process, or if there's any key thing that's missing from that process.
So if we close with our commitment to the following meetings, at a minimum, we're going to have these three meetings, we're going to commit to this date, to have those scheduled and publicized. And in addition, we'd like to hear your feedback in whether you leave us a note or you send us an email later about how that works for you in a process point of view.
It's going to work for everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You surely may.
I wonder if, I love the idea that, that you talked about being able to take community feedback and collate it and act on it. I wondered if there was a way you could make that available online, also for folks who see the, the video of the session and then can answer the questions, because I know there's a lot of folks who can't come on the 22nd but want to be able to communicate. And then my other question, it might be premature, and actually, we told the 23rd for it, is if there are five options being put forth, and I assume we'll have all this wealth of information on the 22nd, are you planning on committing to thinking through those five options through those three sessions? Or if you get some type of feedback at some point, will you narrow down those options so you could potentially be a little more focused when it came to a November vote? Or is it really these five options are on the table from March 22nd through a November ballot item?
Ask that on the 23rd.
I understand, that's fine, I will.
I will just say this, as one person's opinion, not speaking for the board, I, I think it would be hard for us to, hard for me to imagine a model, we present five on the 22nd, and then we have three meetings, and by the time you get to the third meeting, there's only three. That would seem disingenuous. So at least through that, I can't imagine it would change.
But I did think, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, because my impression is where we were going with this was we were definitely going to have community feedback on all those five options through the process, but that we as a board have to make a recommendation on what we think we should do.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So the idea is that sometime in the fall, we would come back after having gone through this whole process and say, this is what our recommendation is. And then as a board, vote on that and say, this is what we should take forth. And then that would, as I was describing before, would be on a November ballot, and we would have to have the ballot language approved. But that would be probably one option that would actually be voted upon, because it would be our recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair. I think at some point, it's going to get to one, but.
And that would be assuming there would be a change from option number one, which is status quo. Because you're going to need to vote on that in November.
Right.
Only if we're selling to school. I mean, only if that's the recommendation, you know, if it's scenario one or two.
If a vote is needed.
And we don't have to.
We wouldn't, that would not go to the ballot.
Or any, any bond action.
Yeah, but that would probably be a March, a March ballot item.
That's true, yeah.
We would, I don't think, go out for a bond then, but. So a question about the closing remarks. Should we have yet a third school board member present that?
Absolutely good with me.
Just, I mean, to have as many faces.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Boundaries. Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. I'm happy to do it, or I, we can defer to Bridget, our newest board member.
I'd be happy to do it, but you have a little more history. I'm happy to do it if, if I can do it.
Yeah, I'm, either way. I, I mean, I'm anticipating that this will lead into the discussion, but also would, would reflect the next steps we're proposing at some level with those milestones, correct?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we have, unless Julie, you'd like to?
No, thanks.
Okay. I kind of knew the answer, but I figured I'd need. We could have one person, if, we are going to take Q and A at the end, right? So we could have one of you facilitate the Q and A and the other one do the closing remarks. And then everybody but Julie gets to talk.
Okay.
You're going to run around with a microphone.
I'm good with that.
So do you guys have a preference? You want to just work it out and let us know?
We'll work it out.
We'll work it out.
I have a quick question before we move on. So the follow-on meetings, the three different meetings, is the goal to have the entire school board attend? Or members of, and then is that, I think, to Elizabeth's point, I think a lot of people in the community feel like the meeting next week is kind of the end-all, be-all. So being clear about that, I think it will be very helpful and help make sure people's questions stay on topic during that meeting, right around the process, as opposed to people voicing their opinion of what's going to happen. So I think as long as, you know, the more clear you guys can be on the process, who's going to be there at those follow-up meetings or for more of an exchange of opinion, I think it will benefit the quality of the meeting, where we actually all get out of it.
Great, got it.
And I want to be respectful of your question, which we didn't really cover in this particular area. So we've, we've gone through a lot of analysis. None of the analysis was part of the UV, or part of the U-Mall scenario. So I mean, it's, we've got five scenarios we'll be talking about on the 22nd. There's not one that says we'll build, and I think your proposal was, is there a space for a school on the U-Mall property?
I would think the U-Mall buildings.
Themselves.
What had occurred to me was, education generally is in a flux. It's obviously going to change a lot in the next 10 to 20 years, we hope. Public education always is in the kind of a catch-up mode, but with a society, but with the technology that we're now confronting, the model, the models that we now see in a lot of areas will probably change. And if you're in a temporary location, by that I mean 20 years as opposed to a 50-year build-out or longer, maybe that makes sense. I can think of, in terms of state funding, how that might not work without amendments, legislative amendments. I can think of a lot of problems along the way. I guess my question is, just, you know, not knowing more, does this sound like a cool idea to any of you? Or should, I mean, you're obviously partway down the road, a ways down the road, with something else. Is that, does it sound cool enough for me to chase it, spend my time? Because I think it's interesting. You know, looking into it. And I know, I haven't heard that anybody else thought of that yet. Have you?
I have not heard of that idea.
Okay. Well, I mean, if you want to say, go bang my head on the wall for a while and see that, maybe a month, and see how, see how far I get.
I, I think that's entirely up to you. I think, you know, we've got, like I said, five options.
The only feedback I'd like is, before I go brain myself, if the answer is already no, you know, like, we're not going to consider it because we've got this, we have a consultant who's already laid other stuff out on the board here, and that's what we're going to do, then, you know, I mean, I know, I've worked in South Ryton a little bit enough to know that sometimes the writing's already on the wall before the wall is even.
Well, I mean, I would, I would look to the board, I mean, I, I think it would be a leap. It would be a leap to think that would be feasible, I think, so. But I would defer to, if the board members have other opinions on that.
I think the timing would not be right for you to spend a lot of time on that right now until we, the dust settles on where we are right now. Because this process, we have to see through to the end, I think, first with what we have on the table.
I see your reference to the 21st century, whatever it is. When everybody says that, I kind of like, oh, God, let's run the other way.
Did we say that somewhere, really?
And you, all of the mechanics here are talking about buildings. So I think that's kind of funny, but.
Where?
Okay, I won't chase it.
Good.
Unless somebody else agrees with that.
I mean, I think what I would, what I would offer, because there wasn't, there wasn't consideration of that specific property necessarily, and I know there's been a lot of things published relative to Mr. Fennard's plans with the U-Mall and so forth. However, I think that at the meeting on the 22nd, there will be some useful information on both the quality of education as well as the assessments of our current physical properties that could inform what alternatives there might be for brick and mortar, whether it's on a short-term or long-term basis. So I, I think I would, I would hold off doing anything independently till at least there's a download of that information, and that might inform your interest or relevance of a different property.
True, although I'd be interested in your interest as well as, you know.
The other thing I would, the other thing I would add is that if it's, if that's something you decide that you are interested in, I, I agree with Elizabeth, wait and see what happens on the, see the information we share on the 22nd. And then your next step may be to check with somebody in the city council and the city manager's office to see if they've already had conversations with the U-Mall about things that are in flight, so.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't heard that, although, I mean, I talked with Heather Twombly, who's the manager over there, I don't know, a couple of months ago or something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what they have either, but.
She had said, you know, our big, our big tenants are there. And then, of course, we get this rollout of, we're going to do housing at some point down the road. So I think, you know, and we know that that model of malls doesn't survive over the long term. I mean, she knows that.
Yeah, if you saw Todd Fennard's proposal for the future, he acknowledges that, and it's pretty different than what it is, yeah.
Well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the only other two items that I had are just clarity, the, I think the planning commission has another, has a meeting scheduled for the 22nd as well. I think there was some conversation, although I can't say it's official, that they were talking about trying to find a way to adjust that, so that, that wasn't another competing conversation. And as John said, we do have babysitting available in that night. So if you are communicating with anybody outside of this room or if you're watching this on television, please know there's babysitting, and we'd love to have you there with us.
We've committed to having all of the meetings, the other subsequent meetings, RETN and childcare available. And then feedback available on the web is another thing we've talked about. So those three things will be present with all these.
Can I have a question? Can I always speak for my school? I'm the president of the PTO at Rick Marcot, but if there's any information you want to get out to families, and John, you know me, you can email it to me and I will get blasted out to all the parents. So that's a good example of, I wasn't aware that there was childcare available, and I can get that out to the parents.
It's relatively new information, so. It's relatively new information, so it doesn't get too bad.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Any other questions on agenda item 11?
Yeah, whether we want to talk any further tonight about the possibility of a survey or not, or at least just note that that's still a question mark, that we have not yet decided. I guess, I would say, I'm not opposed to a survey, but the question is, how much more information are we going to gather from the survey? Or are we going to get enough, do we postpone a question on whether a survey's needed until we see what we've gathered through these four meetings? Or we can even get feedback on that concept during those four meetings?
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's, if that's the right approach, is to say in our closing that that's one of the things that we're considering, and we're going to have these other meetings, and if you have thoughts on that, now would be the time to make those thoughts known, because we'll be deciding that over the next handful of board meetings, I would imagine.
Right. And I would, I would propose that we try to decide that sooner rather than later, because I think it would be better to be trying to do that survey concurrent with the last couple of public meetings, for the same reason that we were talking about, that we're going to lose, you know, people and energy as the summer comes, and it might take us a while to actually nail down the questions on that survey and, and decide how we're going to go about it. So I do think making a decision about it sooner rather than later is better.
Put a note on that, too.
I still, yeah, and I still stand by the position, I think we'll, we'll just get a broader range of people if we reach out. There are people who go to meetings, and there are people who don't. And I think we can capture a little bit more of public opinion by reaching out with a survey as well.
But I guess then, the one other thing is to do it properly, we would, we would need to, we would need assistance, I would think.
Yes.
I mean, it can't just be, I mean, that, it's a, it's a big undertaking beyond.
I have to say, I'm a little mixed on the timing of soliciting feedback vis-à-vis the survey, because the other meetings we're talking about, there's information sharing and there's live interaction, whereas a survey's more of a static tool for feedback. I'm, I'm wondering if, given what we want to accomplish before the ending of school, I'm wondering if a survey shouldn't come in to play once, relative to feedback, as the board is getting ready to vote. It's a, it's a little less impactful to broad community feedback, but I, I'm a little worried that the group that we'd be surveying won't have the benefit of having had the.
Although, there is going to be coverage of all that, like RETN, the other paper, I mean, I think it's, it's going to be pretty well laid out for people that are really interested enough to take a survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a matter of.
Good point, it's all taped, so.
Yeah, it's a matter of weighing how much input we have received, and have we received enough input from the community to make a recommendation.
From a good cross-section, yeah.
And it just may be overkill, we may be really understanding where the community is through these, this process. And that's, I don't think, well, I mean, maybe during the task force, I don't know if a promise was made of a survey, but I don't think, I mean, the board, I think we've always said, we want to have full community input, we want to give all the opportunity to give community input, not just for the sake of letting everybody have their voice, but to fully inform our decision.
Right.
And I think, at the end of this process, we will know if we have enough information, and we will know if the community feels that they've been heard. So I'm, you know, I'm not sure about the timing of.
I'm definitely concerned about not reaching.
Yeah.
Outside of our school, parent-type people.
Well, the other, the other comment on that is, there's, there's nothing that is time-limited over the summer by a survey. So there could be a more open-ended date on survey results, too.
And I think the data that we're going to plan on gathering, which is, what is your position in the community, as far as, are you a parent, are you, do you have kids in the school? Have you never had kids?
Yeah, that'll tell us.
You know, that will give us an idea of whether we've really underrepresented a part of the community, and then we can figure out how best to target, making sure we're hearing from that part of the community.
So if that's, if that ends up being our approach, then in essence, we have to prepare for a survey and maybe, or maybe not use it. Because you don't want to decide, oh, we didn't get the representative, and then be struck, then running fast to fill one all of a sudden. You've got to prepare for that contingency, if that's the approach.
Right.
So, I think, I think we should, my gut is that we need to put this on the agenda for our next, for our next board meeting to decide, because I think we've got, we don't have consensus, which is fine, but I don't think we have agreement yet on what we're, what we're going to approach this is, because I think what I'm hearing, some people feel like we probably should do it, and other people leaning maybe against it, and I'm just trying to read the room.
That sounds right. And the only other question I would ask is, is there information that we need to make that decision? So for example, do we need a cost estimate, or do we need, how do we gather the information we need to make a decision? Because that would weigh into it, right? I mean, if it doesn't cost very much to actually develop the survey and have it in our back pocket, then it might make sense to do it. But if it's going to cost $50,000, or, you know, some outrageous number to prepare it, then, you know, that might lead to a different decision at the next meeting.
Would we use COPE, or, I mean, would we put out, need to put an RFP out for that might be, John? Or how would we approach finding out how much that might cost?
We, we, I'm not quite sure about an RFP, because we had that service last year.
Right.
And there's some guidelines about what, in inflation, you can go out with the same contract as similar, but under a certain inflation, inflation indicator.
Okay.
So I'll check it. Yeah, I'm not, not saying yes or no, but I'll check.
That, that, it was in part what COPE Associates was bringing to the table, right?
Right, yes.
So we decided last year that they are the right ones, so maybe we should find out, at least get, get an estimate from them.
Okay.
I mean, do we all think that that's the thing to do, at least?
I don't know. I think, I'd be interested to know what, what you find out, if we need to go out or not.
Okay.
Oh, an RFP, yeah, 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 I agree with that.
Before we decide that.
Sure, sure. I was assuming that we didn't have to go out, but I agree.
Yeah, what I heard was, we're just going to find out whether or not we would need to go out for an RFP.
Right.
But I guess then, my next point would be, if we, if John finds out we don't have
to do it, then why not go ahead and at least get an estimate of what it would cost for us to have COPE do it? Without telling them that, you know, they've been chosen, you know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a little, I'm concerned, and this is sort of informed by my way past life, is, it's difficult to develop an estimate on a survey until you can give some guidance, guidance around the guardrails of what you're looking for. And I'm not sure we're there yet.
Right.
So I mean, I feel, it feels like a catch-22 position a little bit, because we need some information. I don't know if there's like a per-question cost, or a per-question, per-survey cost.
They've done a survey for us before, correct?
It was.
I don't think so.
They did a draft of a survey that was partially vetted by the group, and, and so it never came to final finality.
Do we know what the cost was going to be to fulfill that obligation?
Well, they did.
That's probably a good enough surrogate for understanding what we're probably up against.
We can find out. There was, they mediated or attended meetings, there was a lot to their contract other than just the survey, so I don't remember that part.
If we could, yeah, if we could get from them the parameters of, we were going to administer this, you know, to get it out to 1,000 addresses, and we anticipated a 30% return, which is high, and it was going to contain, you know, five close-ended questions and 10 open-ended questions, and the analysis associated with that, some parameters that at least we know what we would have received for what cost.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Any other discussion or comments on this agenda item?
The one I have is, I know, you know, Bridget has brought up the, kind of, the discussion of a vote in November, which, I mean, I have to agree that if we really want community feedback, that would be a great target date. I don't think we've had that discussion as a board, and I, that would be good information to have sooner versus later. And I don't, I just don't know if we're prepared to do that, other than to communicate that at this point, it's a target date, or, or is it? I don't, I don't really know where anyone else stands. I think there's good rationale to use it as a target date.
And I think, go ahead. I was going to say, there is, there is a, kind of like, in my head, there's like a backing into that, what are the things that need to happen? And I think Bridget has done some, some work on that. And I, you know, I, in my head, I'm saying to myself, I keep looking at this April 11th work session that we have, wondering if that's the place to really ferret that out and make sure, because we've got some time that we need to get these three events scheduled, and April 11th is going to be here like that. And I'm just wondering if that's a place to kind of just walk through that and get comfortable with the timeline and push on that with each other a little bit.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me.
Well, that was easy.
So we won't put that in the closing remarks?
That's fine. No, totally fine.
All right, any other comments on agenda item 11?
There may not be a lot of choices.
Excellent, thank you all. That brings us to executive limitations policy monitoring, 2.5, financial planning and budgeting. This is, I think, our third pass at this.
It is, yes. And I was able to go through this with David before he left, and the changes once again are in, highlighted in yellow, except there's one table, actually, the board table's in kind of a dark yellow that just, it's the same. So it's not, it hasn't changed. So the superintendent's interpretation on detail policy one is changed to this, this writing here. I'll read detail policy one is risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial condition activities. And the superintendent's interpretation is, I interpret this to mean that I have, will have financial place, plans in place that minimize risk to the most reasonable extent. And if you remember, we had a discussion about credibility and changing, changing circumstances and that kind of thing, but I think that this kind of sums up what, what we can do.
I like that better.
I, I made a specific recommendation on this to delete to the most reasonable extent, because I think minimize risk is doing that. It seems like a unnecessary qualifier.
I think that's, I think that's how it was to begin with, and we had him put in to, to the most reasonable extent. I'm not kidding.
I think that's right, actually.
Not at my suggestion.
She just let me know.
Whichever board member recommended that, I'm disagreeing with you.
Well, I, I took your question to David, and he's fine either way.
Yeah.
So if we, if we hit the, hit the period to minimize risk, period, then we can live with that.
Well, I'd get the rest of the board's feedback, it just seemed redundant.
I, I didn't, it was fine with me to start with.
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed there's a spelling there.
There's a typo, too, but.
Interpret.
So if you have to come back with this, then maybe we can talk about whether we should strike those words, but.
I don't really want to come back.
To get it out today.
Why do we have to come back with it?
Well, no, if, if there's anything else that requires us to come back at some time.
Okay. So let me just walk through this process here real quick. So on the detail policy one, superintendent's interpretation with that adjustment?
Yes.
Looks good.
Yes, yes, yes.
Evidence is acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We are reporting non-compliance, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And our, do we need a compliance plan?
There is a plan on exhibit four.
Okay, all right. Is the compliance plan acceptable?
Yes.
I can't find it, so I'm sure it was.
Do you want time to find it, or you're good?
If everybody else says yes, who am I to say no?
It was only on the, it might not have gotten printed, it was only on the email. I don't know if they printed everything, it was on the email, or only what was in the board packet that got sent to us.
All right, detail policy number two, is the interpretation acceptable?
Yes.
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 Is the evidence adequate?
Yes.
Yes.
We are reporting compliance now?
Yes.
Is acceptable that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Detail policy three, superintendent's interpretation acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate evidence and data?
Yes.
Yes.
Policy compliance. So the overall, so can we assume by default then, the overall is fine?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes?
Yes.
Well, no, he's out of compliance now.
Yes, yes, no, yes.
Yes, yes, no, yes.
I'm sorry.
If you're, if you're out of compliance on one part, I can't, thanks.
I was just saying yes, that I agree with the no.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we'll make that spelling change, delete the yellows, and it'll be public, permanent record.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll work on number one.
All right.
All right. Moving up onto agenda item 13, set the agenda for the April 6 meeting. Draw your attention to the superintendent's report, we are going to have a few minutes of meeting the new business manager. And that Julie and I will not be in attendance at this meeting. So we'll need someone to take the position of chair for, to run the meeting.
I can do that.
Very well, thank you.
Should we maybe have a specific, not action, but under five to have received and maybe reviewed the applications in executive session for the student representative?
Yeah, can we just get them ahead of time, since we're not here? Because I'd like to look at those myself, too.
I, I think that could be an executive session.
Yeah, it's a, it's a student matter, right?
Yeah.
Right? We can't, that can't be an open session, can it, Don?
No, I don't think.
We can clarify it wherever it should be, just to have a specific action, or not action, but information there.
Okay.
One question, didn't we change the location of this meeting?
Oh, it's at Tuttle, yeah.
So on the administrative reports, the fundraising, should that be put to another time? That Julie, I know, has really been following that issue closely. Or are you?
I have.
Yes, you have, that's been your, that's been your issue. You cannot deny that.
I want you to spend a lot of time on N's monitoring reports.
Well, yeah.
It, I think that.
It's just a report.
Well, I think it, if, if we had a few more weeks on that, that'd be better. We have Joanna Bott on analyzing, going from school to school and from different, to different organizations, getting data for me, so it's better, it's better.
Sounds premature now, anyway.
A little bit, yeah. We can, we can put that off.
First meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
What's pay structure?
It's a non-union support staff, history of the structure and some, not final change recommendations, but some discussion of the issues.
We, I would like to find a spot, too. I know Bridgette has some thoughts on communications coming from the board and how we want to manage our communications to the public moving forward, so I think we need some conversation on that. I'm not sure where we should put it, but we should, we need to get that on the agenda of conversation.
I think somewhere middle to early in the meeting would be good, just so that the public who's been asking for more communication from the board would have a chance to weigh in, instead of making them wait till the bitter end. So I would say somewhere before master planning and visioning, maybe, or right after that, somewhere around there.
Yeah, okay, so somewhere, somewhere around master planning and visioning.
I'm looking at Delina, so.
Do you want to wait and tell you're all there?
Oh, that's right, we're not, we're not all there, that's a good point.
Well, well, I'm just wondering if, I mean, is.
Well, these two communications that I drafted, I mean, would it be possible to get comments on those beforehand, or do you think the discussion's going to be deeper than that? That you were envisioning?
I think it is going to be a little bit deeper than just commenting on these.
Okay.
That's my gut, but why don't we start with seeing if people can provide comments on what Bridgette sent, and sending them back, obviously through David, so that we can get those sent back out to everybody, and then we'll see where that takes us. And if we, I think we should put a placeholder at least on this, and depending on the scope of the comments and the discussion that comes out, either it'll be a conversation or an adoption of those communications. The, the one thing I'm looking at a little bit is the superintendent's communication accountabilities, and then some, I was reading through some of the role accountabilities for the board as well, and I want to make sure at least where they're in sync.
That makes sense.
And potentially even, if we're, if we really want to commit to some of the things you suggested, altering those so that it speaks to it from that form.
That makes sense. And the truth is, we have another board meeting a week after this, right? So it's on the 13th, it's not like we're delaying it for a month or two weeks, even, just a week, so.
And we have the work session on the 11th.
Yeah.
So.
If there is a place to, yeah, if there is a place to put it, I, I might consider sort of doing a 5A or making it the new six, because we're talking about student voice, and so we could talk about.
It's a good, it's a good connection.
Kind of, community and.
Right.
Right.
But then aren't we saying we're delaying it till the 13th?
Well, I think there still could be a discussion if, if there's been input received.
On this, okay.
Even if it's only, there's some.
So maybe it's on the next two agendas?
Agreed.
Okay.
I have a quick question on this, Patrick. Is this something we, and maybe Martin, you can answer this, too, could run this by VSB-A?
Which thing?
That the proposed.
Bridgette's.
The one that I emailed.
Bridgette has contact with, with Emily, and this, yeah, that makes some sense, don't you think, just to?
And they're willing to do stuff like that, just sort of one-off things, where we send them stuff and say?
Yeah, no, that's what they do for us.
Okay.
We pay for that.
We pay for that, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay.
Well, a part of it.
Okay, I will do that, I will reach out to them.
All right, so we're going to probably, we're going to add something about the potential new student member, the junior applications somewhere. We've got the communication probably right after student representative, student voice, and we're going to do our best to try to get some thing back to the board members on the applicants before the meeting, and then under master planning and visioning, I'll just put a note in that we definitely will probably want to keep communication going on the survey, discussion, whatever you have, report back and what we think our next steps might be on that, and then obviously there'll be the debriefing of the 22nd, a little bit at least. Anything else?
Are we, do we, are we taking board self-evaluation off at this point until we have our.
Yep.
Retreat?
I think we should make, really do it.
No, I think we should take it off.
Item 16's off?
It's off.
I had to do it for three years.
All right, all right, there we go. Uh, future agenda items. Anything that we need to move off or move up on this list? Hearing nothing, and I think we're good. Moves us to consideration of the minutes for the March 2nd and March 7th meeting. Any corrections or any discussion on those?
Nope.
Hearing none, those are adopted. We have accounts payable orders 33 and 34. I know we had one question that was posed that has been answered. Any other questions or comments? If not, those are accepted. And then we have accounts payable order checks to Howard Center. John, anything you want to say about these?
How they're.
Unbelk it.
They're. Monthly, we were getting those for the Howard Center now.
Yep. Do we need board approval on that? Is that, that is, that's a motion I would need. Does anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable order checks to Howard Center and belk it.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, it's passed. And I think we added an agenda item that we need to step back into executive session, so I have a motion to go to executive session for the purposes of discussing.
No.
Where are we? Illegal matter, real estate proposal, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll convene in the conference room.